Hello, good evening and welcome to Ugandan Crossroads Town Hall. My name is David Lubura and again I want to thank you so much for joining us tonight. We are very glad to have our representative from Kampala, Uganda, Representative Mukono Municipalite, Honorable Betty Namboze Batileke. She is in the studios to talk to you, to talk to us, to talk to me. So we want to thank you so much for taking your time and to the members and the audience, I want to thank you again for taking your time and being part of this town hall. What you're doing is really amazing since we are in the line of what we call now for change. So I want to thank you so much. Tonight, there are going to be a little bit of few rules that are going to govern this town hall. For the members and audience, you have a right to clap, you have a right to smile and laugh. To the members who are watching us online, your right is to comment, send in your questions because I'm not going to be asking my personal questions. Sometimes they are tough, so your tough questions should be also shared here. I want to thank you again for being part of the town hall. Honorable Betty, I want to thank you so much for joining us.
Hi, Mr. Youth Secretary.
You know, for the people here in the diaspora. And you're not alone, your next tour is Mr. Roland Sisileko. He is a former National Youth Secretary for Democratic Party. So what is so important is that both of you, I do believe you're still part of the Democratic Party. Although sometimes people say Honorable Namboze may be more of the way from the party. Those are the things probably Honorable Namboze is going to explain to us tonight. So I want to thank you so much again. But let me start straight away. I'm going to give each of you three minutes just to introduce yourselves again. For the people who live in the diaspora, who were born here, who would like to know who is Honorable Namboze and who is Mr. Sisileko, people would like to know that. So I'm going to start with the first rule, ladies first. Honorable Namboze.
Yes, please. What can I say about myself really? I'm just a humble girl from Mukono. I'll be 50 years in July. Yes, I'm honored to be the MP of Mukono Municipalite. I was elevated to that position in 2010 in a by-election. And I'm also now the Shadow Minister for Information and Capital City Affairs in Parliament, where we have the shadow government. And we came up with a concept which I think was, if you give me an opportunity, I will explain it to Ugandans and everybody watching in of the People's Government to defy Mr. Museveni's government because we believe that he did not win the last elections. So we set up a government in defiance and I'm the Minister for Information still. But in Parliament, I was given an extra law to be the spokesperson of the opposition in Parliament. I am also the DP Vice President for Buganda Region although on suspension. And I'm Mrs. Batileke and I'm so honored to have my husband here. He came with me because these days because of my health, I don't get on well, especially when it comes to issues of personal administration. So these days, basically, we move together because of that. So I'm Mrs. Batileke, I'm a mother of 27 children and they are all mine, biological children, 27 years. And like I told you, I'm the humble girl from Mukono.
All right, thank you so much, humble girl from Mukono Municipalite. Thank you so much. Mr. Sisileko, yeah, would you say something to the public and the audience who are watching us right now?
Wonderful, thank you Campfire TV. This is a wonderful opportunity that we can communicate to you some of the issues that pertain to the idea of a change that we desire for our country and what roadmap we intend to take. My name is Nifol Chuanuka-Lorres Sareko. I am a member of the Democratic Party and in my past life, I used to be behind the microphone asking questions. I used to be the editor of the Citizen and the Nasi newspapers. And I have lived here in exile for quite some time since I was forced to free Uganda after repeated arrests and detentions. And presently, I teach American politics and American history in the State University of New York, where I have been sergeant for the last 21 years of my exile life. I am originally from Pigi, grew up in Imatinje, Kampala suburb. To my wonderful people in Kattwe, I salute you. That's my operations base in Uganda.
All right, thank you so much. For the members who are watching us online again, it's just a reminder, you're free to send in your comments. My technical team will be sending them directly to me and then I'll be pushing them to the Honorable Member Betty Namboze Batileke. I wanted to start with a question, but I see you in a walker right now and that shows a history behind it.
Yes.
Is there any way you can, you know, tell the public what really exactly happened?
Last September, no, September 2017, we had a motion in Parliament. One member, Honorable Rafael Majes, was seeking leave of Parliament to introduce a private Members' Bill to amend the Constitution, specifically Article 102, which talks about the qualifications of the president. As you might be aware, Ugandans came up with a constitution after a very long period between independence and 1985. In 1995, we had had a history of political instability, leadership that is not based on the constitution. And you know, even the 1966 constitution, 1966-67 constitution that we are using was being challenged based on the way it was enacted. That is the famous Pejoni Hall Constitution of 1966-67. So when we got the new constitution in 1995, Ugandans were writing it upon a very big history. And in that document, by and large, the delegates in the Constituents Assembly tried to legislate about so many things so that we, the country, doesn't, would not sleep. The effort was that Uganda, we are making all effort to make sure that Uganda doesn't slip back into the old bad times. So whatever challenged us in the past, like we had ever been ruled by a president who had no academic qualifications, we introduced academic qualifications for leaders. Then people said that a person can come and stay in power forever. Then the constitution had term limits, five-year term, but in any case, a person could not lead Uganda as a president for more than two terms. And then they said, you know, this need to make sure that people don't overstay power and say, well, we should never have a president who is below 35 years, but we should also not have a president above 75 years. Not that old men are stupid, no, but you know, Ugandans, we are thinking that at 75, you don't have that energy to enable you run around the country. And then why 35 years? People thought that maybe a young person has not settled enough and hasn't gathered enough experience to lead a country. So you had to get Uganda and register devotee and you know, all those things. So in 1996, Mr. Museveni was okay with it that the constitution had the term limits. So he asked for the first term, although he had been in power for nine years already, the first term, then the second term. During his tenure as in the second term, then he started attacking that Article 102B. 102, the whole article is 102, then it has A, B, C. So he attacked that Article 102. That was, I had not joined the Parliament by then, but you know, there is still even evidence that Members of Parliament were given 500 million shillings each by then to change. He bribed his way and you know, the provision that deals with term limit was removed. However, Ugandans remained hopeful that maybe when he attends 75 years, he will leave power. You know, for record purpose, nobody knows the exact date of, the exact age of Mr. Museveni, but he keeps on telling us that now he's 74 as we talk right now. He will be 75 years next year. So through Mr. Majes, the regime sponsored a private Members' Bill to Parliament seeking to amend Article 102B. The general population, everybody in Uganda thought that this was bad and you know, there was an opposition to this move. I happen to be one of the MPs who led the opposition against that bill. So when the motion was introduced in September 2017, we resisted it. When we are in Parliament, we can't do anything as long as, you know, when you are in the confines of the chambers, you are governed by the rules of procedure. If you break one of them, you are punished in accordance to the rules of procedure. So we kept on standing up and raising points of procedure. The point of procedure we wanted to raise was, Honorable Sechtoleko had earlier on wanted to move a motion seeking leave of Parliament to amend the constitution in relation to the age of the judges of High Court and the Court of Appeal and the Supreme Court. The speaker ruled that we are not going to receive proposals for constitutional amendments in piecemeals. He said we shall have a full bill sponsored by government because government was under obligation to present constitutional amendment proposals because it was the ruling of court in the case of Amama Babas versus Yoel Emuseveni. So we kept on standing to remind the speaker that you had ruled, earlier on, you ruled that we can't introduce constitutional amendment proposals in piecemeal. So what is so special with this? So when the speaker refused to listen to us, we took on another method. It is also allowed in Parliament, we started singing the national anthem. So I was one of those MPs who were indicted for singing the national anthem in Parliament and the speaker said we had made Parliament an irreconcilable. And she chose to suspend 25 of us. Well, but on that day, when she got up to read our names, Parliament had already been invaded by the SFC forces and we had no opportunity either to exit the chambers. Personally, I had information that I was one of the targeted people and the orders of the leader of opposition were that I should exit the chambers as soon as my name is read, but I never got that opportunity. They grabbed me and tortured me in about 20 minutes. They dragged me down the stairs and in a space of about 20 minutes, they had broken my spine. Well, they later took me to police, but eventually they drove me to hospital tonight. And since then, I have had this problem. I underwent a spine surgery in India and I got three permanent implants. I lost number three, number four and number five of the spine. That will make me an orthopedic wheelchair for life in as far as sitting is concerned because the place of my disability is the back. But I also got another problem when I returned. We lost Honorable Biriga. So when Honorable Biriga died, government arrested me again now that I had prophesized his death, I don't know how. So I had given an interview to one TV. And you know, these were just words of caution. I was telling people whoever, because after Mr. Museveni forcefully amending the constitution, the ringleaders were given a security. So at one interview, I said that you will never be secured by those Amenmen. The bigger security for us politicians is within the population. It is the people who protect us. So my words came to pass and Honorable was assassinated. Sad, he got killed, but then I was arrested and in the process, I got an accident while in the hands of police and I lost a major part of my knee, it is called the patella. And you know, a patella cannot be replaced, it can always grow back. So I underwent another surgery. They removed the bone marrow from this right leg to the left and we leave the process now in the hands of God for that patella to grow back. But given the fact that I'm not a young woman, I've told you I'm making 50 soon. So I don't heal so fast when it comes to bones. That's why I've been now condemned permanently to this wheelchair and walking on crutches. But all in all, we don't consider ourselves as victims. I'm a survivor. There are so many Ugandans who have been tortured by the security personnel and they are in conditions, some of them worse than me.
All right, thank you, Honorable Member. You know, it's a really tough story, but kind of like a joke. A few days ago, I posted on my wall and said, what kind of questions should I ask Madame Teacher? Many people call you Madame Teacher for some reason.
Yes, Ugandans gave me that title.
And I appreciate it. So when somebody told me, well, be careful with that Madame Teacher. She will teach you how to do journalism. So I want to thank you so much again. All right, so from the audience, we are now going to start taking in questions. Because she's a teacher and she's called Madame Teacher, I'm only going to give her three minutes for some of the questions.
Interestingly, I'm not a teacher. Ugandans, I'm a journalist and I had a program on radio and we brought in this as petty titles, me being the Madame Teacher and then the moderator Honorable Kasubant as the class monitor. But then Ugandans made me the teacher and you know, I enjoy being called Madame Teacher even more than being called Honorable Namboze.
Yeah, because you're good at it. Okay, I want to thank you so much. So I'm going to start taking questions from the audience. I'm giving you one minute for the question, then I'll give a couple of minutes, probably three to four minutes to Honorable Namboze to respond to your questions. Yeah, sir, you can come in.
Hello.
Yeah, you can move a little bit closer here.
Okay, so my name is Richard Mayombia.
Richard Mayombia.
And I have been here for 19 years.
In years.
And I have an organization called the International Forum for Democracy. And the reason why I have that organization with some other people is make sure that we resolve our conflict because we think that Uganda rules bad, the way it is performing is because of the conflicts that are in Uganda. So that's a long story. So I want to ask you some questions because you are Member of Parliament and I want you to answer it in the best way you can. I believe you are supporting Honorable Chagrin and the People Power to win the next presidential election and I think they are going to win it. But as for me, I'm asking you this on behalf of my organization, the overall political and economic system in Uganda to end dictatorship in Uganda. So and I'm going to paraphrase this according to my book of democracy because this is a civic educational book of how the Americans made their democracy and resolved their conflict. Because part of the problem that we have and we're Member of Parliament that makes laws in Uganda is because of the Parliament that are giving money and whatever they want to pass bills and everything that they want that is taking away everything from the people of Uganda. In chapter 17, I'm paraphrasing to you, you can go on observing that in a new Uganda would be better and what are the steps that we need to do to have the same system in Uganda of Congress? Because in Congress, we have two chambers, the Senate and the House of Representatives. Now let me read to you. The Congress is divided into two parts, the Senate and the House of Representatives. Because it has two chambers, the US Congress is known as a bicameral legislature. The system of check and balance works in Congress. Specific powers are given to each of the chambers because in America, you could never make laws as one body as it is in Uganda without checks and balance. What steps would you propose as you today that we can have the same in the new Ugandan constitution? That was my question.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
First of all, there is no model that is foolproof that once you adopt this particular type of governance, you are assured of good governance. Take for example Britain. Britain is a highly centralized country when you observe their systems. It's a unitary government. But practically, when you go there, you find that a lot of power has been decentralized and powers and responsibilities and functions of government have been centralized. You see people in Scotland, England, you know, and you can't really come to believe that this is a unitary system of governance. They don't have a constitution written anywhere, but there are those who lose everybody, observes even if they are not written anywhere. They don't have term limits, but you can't find there somebody who has refused to leave power. So what I, why I went into that is to show you that it is not about even the system at times. The beginning of everything in a country is about governance. To secure a good government, you must get yourself good governors. US here was lucky, they had Washington and his colleagues, those who followed him. For over 300 years now, they have been building this democracy. In Uganda, as we are today, we don't even have the luxury space to discuss great ideas like the one you are proposing because first of all, we don't even have a nation to talk about. Some of us believe, and this is why we are in this struggle, that we should first own Uganda as a country, that we needed to renegotiate our existence as a country. Maybe models that work elsewhere will not be work at our place. We look at the uniqueness of our country. We look at the diversity of Uganda. Maybe instead of having Congress where we have two chambers, we needed to have regional parliaments that Buganda has a Parliament, Bonyolo has a Parliament, Kalamoja has a Parliament, Acholi has a Parliament. Maybe that is what we need. But how can we discuss that when we don't even have the best? The best is that power should belong to the people. Once power is in the hands of the people, then the people of Uganda, properly guided by the history of our country, will come up with the best system of governance. So as we talk now, we are focusing more on liberating our country from the people who captured the state. Today, it's clear we are being led by a junta, they captured the state. The state power, they captured it from the people of Uganda. So first things first, we need first of all to get back our country. Once we get back our country, we can talk about a national conference where people would come up with ideas, one of them being this one. And then those ideas will be discussed and we enact a constitution capturing whatever will be decided. And then once we give ourselves a new constitution, a new constitutional order for Uganda, starting with returning the power into the hands of the people, then we can have space and the time and opportunity to discuss great ideas like this one is proposing. Right now as we speak, we don't have space to consider such things. And if you start introducing them right now, they will look like it will be diversional. We don't want anybody now diverting our minds from the struggle. This struggle is about getting back our country.
All right, thank you so much, Honorable. I guess, gentlemen, the question has been answered. You want to add something?
Can I add something there?
Sure.
Good thing you bring up the history of the United States. I think one of the fundamental documents that one need to examine when you talk about the United States Constitution is Federalist Paper Number 10 by James Madison. It stipulates the reasons why they needed these two chambers, okay? We can't go through the whole document. But the number of things that we need to do for Uganda is primarily what I should say. Let us have the citizens own the country. The problem, not only in Uganda, but in many other African countries, but very evident in Uganda, is that those who took over after the colonial governments left, we are actually colonial admirers. And I'm not even going to excuse wonderful people that we praise over and over like Kwame Kuma or the others. These were colonial admirers, maybe with the exception of people like Patrice Lumumba. So when they take over power, they behave like colonialists. The current regime in Uganda is picking laws dating back at 1935, 1920 and applying them against its citizenry. These were laws that were introduced for the sole purpose of gugging the natives, the native Africans. And the colonial admirers led by Yoel Emuseveni in the case of Uganda are picking these laws and applying them to the citizens. So if we say that the country is hijacked, we need... we need to reclaim that space, empower the people of Uganda. Let me tell you, minus the amendments, the nineteen ninety-five Uganda Constitution is a wonderful, beautiful document that you can live with. But because the people of Uganda have not been energized to rise up as the constitution gives them the power to challenge the powers that be, we are having a problem. Take this case and ponder it for a moment. You hold an election and Kiza Besigie, you believe you voted for him, he has won. And then you sit back and blame Kiza Besigie for not fighting to secure your vote. Besigie has one vote, you also have one vote. So the owners returns to the people. Here, some of us who belong to, who are aligning ourselves with the People Power Movement would believe that the primary project is to empower Ugandans to reclaim their space and demand a decent state where they can discuss wonderful motions like you do. These motions have been proposed. For instance, in terms of parliament, there are documents that have been written over time regarding proportional representation, which I believe is a wonderful model. So that no minorities are left behind when it comes to composing the parliament. We can also apply proportional representation when it comes to the army and so many other areas, civil service. Being a nation that has about fifty-seven ethnic entities, I don't like using the word tribes because it means a grouping of primitive animals.
No way.
So, so let us really be serious. Let's reclaim our space, then we can have such wonderful ideas.
And for emphasis, even if you were to introduce a Congress in Uganda today, it will be abused. Just to see how the country has abused the decentralization. It was a very good model, especially for a small country like Uganda, but it has been abused. So you look at us, you are MPs. You know, is it, are we performing poorly just because we are not in two separate chambers? No, it's about our color. So even if you were to bring senators and then congressmen, as long as you have this system, the current one, where people don't own their power, even that very system would be abused. And the only thing that will come with it is just an extra expense on that taxpayer.
All right, thank you so much. So to the members who are online, we have a few, I have a few statements to make. Your questions are in and very soon we'll be engaging you. So it's gonna be a mix-up of asking questions. We will have questions from the audience and questions from online. But now, let me take another gentleman before I start getting questions from online. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Habat, Habat Chivoka. And I'm a citizen of the world, I love Uganda in particular. I am a supporter of DP. I'm a DP, I was born DP and I died DP. But at the moment, I am People Power. But my question goes to you as a DP member. What do you think of President Nobat Maou? Is he a legitimate leader of the Democratic Party? If not, why? That is my question. And number two, are you, are you going to, to, if Bobby Wine was to stand as the candidate against Museven to reclaim the space, as you have said, are you willing to support him, to campaign for him and with him?
Thank you, gentlemen. Honorable, I think it's a good opportunity to respond to that question or those questions basically.
Honorable Nobat Maou is my president in the party. I have some issues with his administration. But they are not so grave to the extent that I would love to waste this great moment on going into our small disagreements. My problem in the party is about constitutionalism, following the party constitution. And I've always raised these issues with the right people. But in summary, I want to give you an example. The party constitution provides that we shall hold a delegates conference as a party annually. That DP as a party shall hold what they call National Councils, the National Council Meeting, at least once in every six months. That DP must have what they call the DP Parliamentary Group. That is a composition of all people who stood for parliament on the DP ticket, including those who didn't go through. And that is the policymaking organ of the party. We also have the National Executive Committee of the party. The current one was elected in two thousand and fifteen. I was elected unopposed in that delegates conference as the president for Buganda Region. When I tried to call meetings in my capacity as the president for Buganda Region, I was suspended from office for three months. A commission was set up to investigate my matter. It is now two years, nobody has ever told me, the suspension has not been lifted. So without the party organs functioning, you are likely to get so many problems, even where you have a nice president like Nobat Maou. However, some of us have counseled ourselves that now we want to fight the most important battles first. The most important battle right now is to liberate our country. We don't want to confuse ourselves with secondary battles like those in our political parties. Partly, the problems we have in our political parties are a result of a country that is not governed properly. You see, even when you are in a home and you are not a responsible father, your children are likely also to commit crimes here and there just because you have a bad government. Political parties are also institutions. All the institutions of government under Museven have collapsed. So the same threat has come to our political parties. But for a moment, we agreed and I've made this clear that we shall not, for now, we don't want to engage in the DP issues. As much as I request my brother Honorable Maou to try, bearing the present environment, we all realize the environment under which he's working in. But let him try as much as possible to deal with some of these issues. So I don't want to discuss this issue of DP. But what I must tell you, Mr. Chivoka, I carry a life membership card of the party. I love DP because of its ideology. The issue of people power is a mass movement by Ugandans. And if you are careful, if you were to look deeply to see where this thing came from, you will appreciate that Honorable Chagulani takes credit for popularizing this movement, but he did not start it. For example, during the Tochikwatako debate, the first politician to get dressed in red and come to parliament in red was me. The day we dressed ourselves in the red ribbons in parliament, Honorable Chagulani was even here in America at Harvard. He joined us later. We are so grateful that he has popularized our movement. We want the red color to remain a unifier. We want the People Power Movement to be and all of us, all forces of change should have, should be members of this people. Nobody should be allowed to monopolize the People Power Movement. It is a people's mass movement. It is a reaction and an effort by Ugandans who think that, you know, we have been dealing with Mr. Museven in our political parties, but we think that we should now unite to make a common front against the dictatorship. Somebody was saying that you are uniting because Museven is very powerful and you must unite in order to defeat him. I said, no, we are uniting because we are dealing with a criminal. If a thief comes in a village, he's not very powerful, but he will make so many men in that village to sleep outside their homes. So you are talking about this issue of Honorable Chagulani. I joined the struggle when I was twenty years. For thirty years now, I wake up every morning to go and campaign and interest all Ugandans to join the struggle. I've been in prison, I've been maimed. Even my family has suffered because we want to interest all Ugandans to join us in the struggle against dictatorship. Any addition on our side is welcome. And when Honorable Chagulani joined us, we felt refreshed and we treasure him. One small mistake some people are committing is to try to use him to blackmail as a politician. You know, like you, you have to say this, you must, you know. And to create a situation as if we, Ugandans, have reduced this struggle to an episode in a frame where you have one film star and he goes and attacks all balances, fights everybody, then wins the battle and then is declared the super sitter. We can't do, we cannot operate like that in the struggle. We need everybody. One thing we should not do, one injustice we shouldn't commit against ourselves is to deny ourselves democracy within this movement that is fighting against the dictatorship. I fault the NRM people for declaring Museven a solo candidate. I don't want you to do that to my honorable brother Chagulani. What we need is dialogue among ourselves. Once we sit together, let everybody who has political ambitions to be president, if we choose that our strategy should be to take government elections, because that is also still debatable. If we choose that the strategy now is to target two thousand and twenty-one, let anybody who has presidential ambitions come up. And we shall sit and once we sit and we decide for sure that Honorable Chagulani is the right person to lead us today, Betty Nambozi will be his campaign manager number one. What I don't want is to ransom colleagues in the struggle. Let's not start a conflict among ourselves. I think Honorable Chagulani will benefit a lot if his candidacy is alive the art through consensus as than blackmail, ransomming, intimidation, maligning others. So that is it. And I'm so happy that we have started taking very important steps in that direction. Personally, I'm part of the meetings between Dr. Besigie and Honorable Chagulani. For now, we have started, we have decided to start with the first things first. You cannot have two thousand and twenty-one unless you have today. There is no way you can talk about winning elections in two thousand and twenty-one when you cannot go to work. Honorable Chagulani cannot go to work today. He cannot hold a single political meeting. He cannot attend a talk show on radio. Even a journalist would report about him that Chagulani has been at Carere and did this and that, that journalist is sat the next day. So when we sat, we said, what is the most urgent thing we should, we can start with? As we build the bigger coalition, we said, let's start by claiming our space, freedoms. And we have come up with a program of activities which we are soon rolling out to the public. And we are saying, Mr. Museven, you will not have your freedom unless we also have ours. You will not go to Busoga, to Bonyolo, to Kabale, to Gulu and address ladies when we can't address them. So for now, we have decided to work on the issue of space. Whoever brings, manufactures conflicts between Dr. Besigie, Chagulani, Chagulani Eliasu Lokuago, Chagulani Betty Nambozi, and everybody else, we have so many other people. We have the leader of opposition, people coming from North and Uganda, people coming from everywhere. Whoever is starting a conflict among forces of change by stubbornly refusing, making the issue of Chagulani's candidacy a topic that must be imposed and discussed at every meeting, those, some of those people are doing it out of, of, yes, true love for candidate Chagulani. But we should not also rule out the fact that the enemy is also interested in this matter. The more we conflict, the better for him. So this debate will always be imposed and people will be told to swear upon the name of the living God if they will vote for Chagulani. And I think that is, that is trying, that is, you know, creating conflicts for ourselves for nothing. What I've said is, we needed to sit together. Honorable Chagulani is a very charismatic leader. You don't find such people easily. You don't find the people who join the politics. And you know, everybody else, before, if you go and ask somebody, you love Chagulani, what did he do? And I mean, some people don't know. So if you have such a person, that person is God sent. And if you have a God sent leader, you don't use him to blackmail others. So let's do first things first. First of all, we need to establish a good relationship among ourselves as forces of change. Then we need to agree, are we targeting Museven this time through twenty twenty-one elections? If the answer is yes, then who will be the candidate? Not only for the presidents, we should also develop a formula to determine the candidates from presidents, members of parliament and local leaders. Because even if tomorrow we go on the campaign for Honorable Chagulani successfully and he wins the presidency, when we don't have candidates to cover the entire country, then he will not survive as a president. He will be over for the next day.
All right, thank you so much, Honorable Nambozi. I guess you've answered well the question to the gentleman and because she's Madame Teacher, so I wanna thank her so much. Yes, I wanna come to the audience again, but let me first go to the online viewers. They're sending in questions. There is one, he's called Sabrano Fredson Kavega. He asks, Honorable, do you believe that unity between the opposition parties can be a master for bringing a big change in the current Uganda's politics?
You know, it's not out of choice that we must unite. It is the only option we have. And the fact that we are not united ends with us leaders. The people are. They have been united for so long. When I stood in Mukono in 2010 in the by-election, every person came down to Mukono to campaign for me. In 2011, there, every political party had a candidate against me. FDC had a candidate against me, UPC. Then there were several independents. But people voted for me. In the last election, 2016, I, I, I did not agree with the actions of some people who were supporting Dr. Kiza Besij, who chose to make Amamambaba their target. I continuously told them that although I supported Dr. Besij, I hate a campaign strategy that targets Amamambaba's. I was misunderstood. And you know, they did all what they could to fail me in Mukono. So Besij got 38,000 votes from my constituency. I got 45,000 votes. And the FDC candidate, who was, you know, when Besij came to Mukono, they even assaulted me at his lady. I was assaulted. And you know, they even got up to say, you people, Honorable Numberze is our friend, yes, but this Mr. Lukubirabakubi is the FDC candidate. Please take the key. So you know, the feeling was that whoever will vote for Besij, will go and vote for Lukubirabakubi. He got 1,500 votes in Mukono while I had 45,000. So these voters are very clever people. They know what they want. For them, they are acting together. It is us leaders out of ego or out of small disagreement based mainly on a strategy who are not united as of yet. But as for the people of Uganda, they are united. We have two groups. We don't have a third force in Uganda. We have two forces, the first and second. The opulosa and the opulist. Whoever has tried to establish a third force has failed. Even people like General Mogishamuntu, who are forming a political, their own political parties, again at their press conferences, you hear them saying that as soon as we launch our political party, we shall go and meet our colleagues and we form a coalition. So that is it.
All right. Thank you so much. Now back to the audience. Gentlemen, please, can I ask a question?
Thank you. Thank you, moderator. I'm delighted to see you, Madame Teacher. I prefer calling you Madame Teacher.
That's great.
I'm your agent listener. My name is Simon Msoke Suuga. I'm a People Power supporter and a diehard. My question is, Madame Teacher, I believe and understand that you love kind of Dr. Kiza Besij. You support him that you never deviate away from. I would draw you back to Honorable Chagulani. Honorable Robert Sentom Chagulani currently cannot do his personal businesses in Uganda. He cannot sing. Everything is on hold. Dr. Kiza Besij's business is booming. The petrol stations, the hotels, everything is moving on. Many people have regarded him as a mall. Are you supporting a mall for unity? Or not? That's my question.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madame Teacher?
Well, you see, we are all victims of the propaganda by the enemy. It is, it gets, at times it gets so sad and demoralizing when we hear you people talking about us like that. But when I was coming here, I picked a book, you know. He sent it to me, by the way. What Happened by Hillary Clinton. What Happened. So as I was traveling, I, I came reading that book. And at page 45, Hillary Clinton is talking about the many lies that were told against her. And she says, like I believe, that I believed that Americans would just see through these lies. That I thought that Americans knew me and what I stand for. And that they would not at any one time believe that I could trade the principles and values for which I've stood for all my life for any price. But she says that this is a strategy by leaders, one. But, 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 by some politicians, one. When bad things are said about good leaders, good and honest leaders, when lies are told, you know, people tell lies about them. People tend to believe that all politicians are crooks. And at the end of the day, there is nobody to talk about the real bad men in your society. If having a petrol station that works, that has not been closed in Uganda, makes one a mall, my brother, Honorable Chagulani, will be one. He has a petrol station in Igomba, it's working. He has other businesses, they are working. One. They are targeting his concerts because Museven fear people getting together. Besij had a security company. He was one of the first people, Ugandans, to have a security farm in Uganda. It was closed. My husband here cannot work. It's only that they haven't written about him. He was a load technician in Mukono district. One time, they invited him and told him either you get, you separate with your not a wife or you leave our employment. He chose to leave the job. He went into business. Mobilized the funds, some borrowed the funds. And he bought, he bought loaded equipments, gradars, excavators. But he can't get business. Even when he is hired by a private person, they go and intimidate that person that why are you giving business to Numberze's husband? He's not working. So Honorable Lukwago was my lawyer and he is still my lawyer. Let me tell you. One time I was in Euzira, they had arrested me. They sent me money. To Mukunde, sent me money through somebody called Chisula. I understand he is here in the US. He sent me money that tell Numberze that as long as he is hiring Lukwago, she will be found guilty. We are sending her that money to get another lawyer so that she can get out of prison. My husband, Ren, ahead of those people who are coming to the prison to talk to me. And you know, he came. It was not time for him to see me, but he kept on sending me information. We beg and butokiliza, we beg and butokiliza. So I kept on saying, what are they going to tell me? Because for him, he said, no, my wife can't go into that. So eventually, when they brought the money, Chisula, I refused to take it. And you know, Chisula was a clever man. He used that money to come here. He never took it back to. During the same period, there was a lady called the Kagua, who was arrested for indecently assaulting a young boy. He was, Lukwago was his lawyer. That lady was sentenced to 10 years in the prison. When she made the appeal, they told her, do you know what? You will never be able to get out of jail as long as Elias Lukwago is still your lawyer. But if you can denounce her, we shall release you. From prison, the woman wrote a press statement and said, I'm dismissing Lukwago. He's no longer my lawyer because he has been using my case for political mobilization. In two weeks' time, the lady was out of prison. So today, Lukwago's chambers only handle cases, pro bono cases to do with us politicians. It is, it is as if he's even doing, giving free service. He can't get these big farms to hire him. Yet he's one of the best lawyers in Kampala. But you can't find that his place Coca-Cola, MTN, what, what. Other people get, other lawyers are becoming so, so rich. But you know, he can't. I was working at CBS. I would have kept my job up to now. Because I'm a journalist, I didn't want to go out of employment just because I'm MP for Mukono. But when CBS was closed, one of the conditions for reopening CBS was that CBS should never have my program, Tujukani. The very program that gave me the title, Madame Teacher. Because I was not on that program for free. I was fetching a salary from that program. I would have loved to stay in employment. Because you know, being an MP is not a job which you can rely on for the rest of your life. I'm not also working as a journalist. Even for programs I go to which where I don't pick any pay, like I've been appearing on CBS every Saturday. Today, they say you can't appear on CBS every Saturday. You must appear there twice in a month. So this thing is general. One thing you must know. Our brother Chagulani is facing a bigger attack just because he has come at this time. Every time Museven perfects his art of doing bad things against the opposition. So I don't know where I want this debate to end. One, you have choose Besij of being a mall. Then the next question you will ask, why don't you unite for Besij to support Chagulani? Then the two don't tarry. So be aware of this talk. Who advances such empty talks? Tamale Mirundi. Does he work for you? Tamale Mirundi is a regime propagandist. So he gets up and says, you know, Besij is very rich, he has total petrol station. But you see, Museven cannot close that petrol station at, in Zambia. Because Toto, like all those international companies are bigger than some governments in Africa. But at least he killed the manager of that petrol station, who that is Besij's brother. He killed him. So which type of trade is this between Besij and Museven? Where the money gets his brother killed? Just because he's playing games with Museven? To some of us who have been near Kiza Besij and we know him beyond the political podium, as a person, as a friend, we feel so much insulted when people start talking such things against him. We can't say that given the present environment, we change the candidate. But that should not come through maligning others and telling outright lies against them. So I kindly beg you people to be wise. Let's be able to detect lies. He's one of the people who invited me here. He knows when he invited me. But when I left Kampala, Mirundi went on the radio and said, you see, Numberze was given 50,000 US dollars to go in America and trade off Chagulani. I'm seated here in a wheelchair. I have had two separate surgeries on my spine. But people say Numberze is not sick. You know, some of these things are so demoralizing. But you know, Besij and I, and tomorrow Chagulani, these things you are saying about Besij, tomorrow you will say them against Chagulani. We are not the first victims of such a strategy by the enemy. When Mandela was in prison, some people used to say that he's dealing with the whites. Mahati Magandi was even killed by his own people. When he told them that let's not use violence, those who are interested in violence opened up a hate campaign against him and told people that, you know what? Mahati Magandi is on the side of the colonialists. That's why he doesn't want us to use violence against them. They killed Mahati Magandi. People who had been fed on the hate campaign. But today, when you go to India, Mahati Magandi is still the father of the nation. So kindly, be be careful about this hate propaganda being spread against us. It hurts very much that, you know, when you are fighting for freedom in Uganda, you have to fight with the enemy with one arm, while the other hand is trying to control colleagues who are attacking you from your own side. It hurts. So kindly, this hate campaign that is being adversely by a number of people, including our very own, we will catch up with them. Because today you can say Besij has a petrol station. Then I also bring you evidence that Honorable Chagulani also has a petrol station that is working in Igomba. He also has other businesses. But why should we really go to that? Why should we, why should we really reduce ourselves to such a level? Those are just diversionally things, my brother.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mrs. Okonkwo.
I think some of these issues, we need to give them actually a historical perspective and understand the modus operandi of who we are dealing with. I'm fortunate that I got on the scene when I was young. Now I have lived my 50s. I'm about to exit the stage. And I have seen this happen over time. When Yoweri Museven came to power, his finger pointed at the Democratic Party and I chose them for being responsible for the scourds in Uwe. There was even an advertisement in his first election in 1996 against Pocawanga Semogera saying he's responsible for the scourds in Uwe. So we have a regime that has mastered manipulating the population by feeding us lies. And we take them in and we attack our colleagues and turn them into enemies. It's fine, it's healthy. I'm sitting here. I'm part of the International Desk for the People Power Movement. Okay? She's a part of the People's Government. We are seated together here. A few weeks ago, in Uganda, they sat together and signed the document because we have come to the realization that this person with evil intent is sneaking in messages that we swallow and then we destroy the process. Because, let me sit back for one minute. I received four calls from Uganda. Betty Numberze receives money from Kareka Ihura. If, if, if you don't know that. Okay? Kiza Besij is Museven's mall. Nobody mall is an operative of Yoweri Museven. Actually, Robert Chagulani was sponsored by Kareka Ihura to weaken Kiza Besij. Okay? So we stand there totally confused, dazed by these political rays coming from the regime. My fellow, my fellow Ugandans, we need to step back and say, who is the enemy? Because I don't use the word openly when I'm talking about Museven and the NRM. These are enemies of the country. We need to step back, identify the enemy. We attack the enemy. We have differences. We have differences, okay? But these differences must not supersede the major objective of changing and transforming and democratizing our country, okay? I was opposed to NRM when Kiza Besigie was the National Political Commissioner. But how many of you were in NRM? So, are we going to accuse everyone who has been in NRM? How many of us are there who have never belonged to NRM? I can tell you, I'm in the minority, most likely. So, we need to sit back and say, the time has come. We need to link arms, confront the dictatorship, and move forward. The power belongs to the people and the people might, must utilize their power.
All right, thank you so much.
If you will allow me, one. Among us, there are colleagues who are attacking Dr. Besigie and making sure that Dr. Besigie and Honore Bocagulani don't sit on one table. But when you trace their steps, first of all, most of them were originally with Nasaseba Gala. I was in Uganda and actively in politics when Nasaseba Gala came on stage. When Nasaseba Gala came on stage, those brothers of mine, the Marikes, they attacked Kawanga Semogere and told all holy bo things against him you can imagine. I and Lukwago were cited as younger people who had refused to leave the old men's camp. I and Lukwago sticked with Kawanga Semogere. So, they harrassed Kawanga Semogere until Semogere conceded and stood aside. Towards the elections in 2001, our candidate was Nasante Gesaba Gala. On the nomination day, he was turned away by electoral commission. And when he was turned away, those people picked nomination forms and took them to Dr. Semogere and said, "Our mosaic, assist us, understand." You know, Dr. Semogere told them that to be a presidential candidate, you need to have prepared mentally and financially. And he said, "I did not prepare. I can't become a candidate now." So, as a follow-back position, among the people who were standing at that time, who had the qualifications, was Dr. Besigie. Dr. Kawanga Semogere organized a meeting for us at Popopo. And, you know, he said, let me say this in Uganda. That is how it all started. And, you know, we went into unity with Besigie without an agreement because it was us acting desperately, because we had no candidate. That same group in the last election was with Amama Mbabas. When they were with Amama Mbabas, Bobby Wine was with Besigie. So, they were with Amama Mbabas. As soon as Honore Bocagulani comes up, they come, makes a ring around him and starts abusing Besigie. And I don't think that takes us anywhere. Let me tell you. Distance distorts. I always tell my brother here on the phone, when I call him, he tells me some things and I tell him, "Chuanuka, distance distorts." For us who are in Uganda today, some colleagues have traded our struggle into a fight for the leadership of the opposition. They don't mind. Even if Honore Bocagulani doesn't win, they don't mind. As long as they go through as MPs and leads the opposition. That's why you see they are intensifying their battle against Besigie because, at the moment, he is the de facto leader of the opposition, having been the candidate who is believed to have won the last election. To some of us, people like Betty Numberze, I'm no longer struggling to become an MP because I'm already one. And I know it doesn't end with that. Even if I am an MP, when the country is suffering, I will also suffer. Even if I am an MP, the junta will break my back. So, for us, we want to take the struggle further. We want to rebuild our country. But some of our colleagues would be happy to be leading the opposition. That's why they are fighting FDC so much to the extent that a person like Natualla can join Museveni's government as a minister and DP does not hold a meeting, it reprimands her. But when Betty Numberze joins Besigie in his defiance government against Museveni, she's indicted in her political party as somebody who has crossed to the side of the enemy. So, let me make this final appeal to you. We need to be smarter than our enemies. These days, Museveni is very happy because he has thrown the opposition camp into confusion. The other day, Buannika was on CBS and he said, "Betty Numberze, Lukwago, and Kiza Besigie, we are going to finish you off one by one." That cannot be the target of people who want to cause change in Uganda. Nobody can think that if we finish off Numberze, Lukwago, and Besigie, then the struggle will have a diverse. In fact, we are taking ourselves back to point zero. So, my appeal is that, be careful when things are, bad things are said about some of your activists. We are not as evil as that. We have committed our lives to the struggle. We can't trade it for any price.
All right, thank you so much. Now, of course, I want to come back to the audience, but let me go straight to the people who are watching us online. One of the questions that is coming in is, I think, in line with the percentage in parliament. And this is Robert Kakosa. He asks, Honore Bocagulani, recently, the news reported that your allowances were increased by 39%. And just a couple of days ago, we have learned that the parliament is again going to increase, to increase or pay for your OTT. Are you going back to defy as you did during the edge limit bill? Thank you.
You see, the Ugandanis have failed to learn the tricks of Museveni. When a budget is brought before parliament, the people are supposed to make sure that that budget is a pro-people budget, are the MPs. But what the government does through the media, they pick on analyzing the vote for parliament. Last year, the vote for parliament had 430 billion shillings. Even this year, that vote still has 430 billion. So, what do they do? Every government department, for example, budgets for state funerals, they say, assuming we lose five MPs this year, then they move down the market and say, "What is the cost of the cascade? What is the cost of cement? What is the cost of food?" And then they say, "Bario expenses." Then they put there 300 million, 300 million shillings. That is, the budget is drawn on a presumption that we might lose five MPs this year. So, what the media does, they go divide the five by 300 million by five. Then they get 60 million shillings. They come out with an adding. Every MP will receive 60 million for bario. The budget is talking about five people and it's just an estimate that in the case we lose five MPs, you know, people die. And when an MP dies, he's supposed to be given a straight bario, that is it. So, the budget has 300 million estimates. They divide it and they make you believe that every 60 million shillings has been set aside for every MP to die. But can we have a parliament where all MPs die? One day, my brother, he apostled and said, I wrote on his post, "The good thing is that one of your relatives is an MP. Pray that she dies so that your family benefits from that 65 million." So, what am I saying? These are diversional. Government is trying to draw your eyes away from the most important things in the budget by crucifying those people who are supposed to crucify it. Tell me one office you know about in government that does not have a telephone line. One office in a setup of a government, even if it is here in the US or in another country. Tell me of one office, government office, that does not have a telephone line. So, what is it? A member of parliament has an office. The thing that was done for me, I did not agree with it and that's why I don't use those iPads personally. I don't use it. One, those iPads are on a central server. Whatever you put there, everybody sees. So, you can't, you can't do your private things on that iPad. So, when they were about, and I said, "Why are they buying them for us?" But they said, "We are moving away from paper, hard copy, to electronic copies. So, we are giving you an iPad. For every document in the parliament, you will receive it on that iPad." So, all along, MPs get data on that iPad. And when the tax was introduced, these are not our iPads, they are parliamentary iPads. They give you a line, they pay for it, they put their data of a certain percentage, you know, a certain amount of money, monthly, so that you can access electronic copies of parliamentary documents. Away from that, each one of us has his private phone for which he buys, he or she buys the data and pays taxes. But even if it is something very bad, assuming it is so bad to pick the taxes for MPs, what is the amount involved? Thirty-six thousand, emitwale, satumoka, kaka. In total, it is less than 120 million, the whole year. But the whole country has been drawn away from the budget, discussing the budget, to discussing this smaller thing. Let me tell you, for example, that budget is 34 trillion shillings. To raise 34 trillion shillings means more taxes for you. Nobody is trying to see what are the new taxes. Because the budget is moving up, Uganda is saying it is going to sponsor it beyond 50%. So, they are going back to the people to draw more taxes from them. But our eyes have been moved from that to the 36,000 shillings proposed for each MP for the taxes. Two, the Hetha budget was 2.3 trillion shillings. It has been reduced to 2.2 trillion shillings. Nobody is asking, "Why are you cutting the Hetha budget instead of raising it?" Agriculture has been given 996 billion. Agriculture, the backbone of the country, the backbone of our economy, 996 billion shillings. But the army, defense, which is a classified, involves only classified expenditures, they don't tell you what they will buy, has been allocated 1.9 trillion. So, the money that will be, will be going to the Defense Ministry. If you compare it with money that will go into agriculture, agriculture has 90, 90, 996 billion. Defense has 1.9 billion. Trillion, 1.9 trillion. Nobody is asking about that. Nobody is asking why the government is cutting the funds into the education sector when, in fact, we are having more children now going to school. We are living in a country where children who go for UPE are given 700 shillings per term. 700 shillings per term. So, the country has been diverted to something very, very small. Let me ask you. Suppose today, parliament says, "Well, we give up, we shall pick our own taxes and, you know, all of us can pay the 36,000." Will that make the 2019, 2020 budget agreeable to Ugandanis? Because, let me tell you, parliament is likely to do it. Now that Rebecca Kadaga came out and said that she doesn't support it because, you know, why don't you ride on this excitement? Every politician would do that. I can easily tell you here that I will, I will not take the money. After all, is there any money? What is 36,000 shillings? Nothing. So, suppose now, after making all these arguments and neglecting to tackle the most important aspects in the budget, parliament gets up and says, "We, we have heard the voice of Ugandanis. MPs will now foot their own OTT." Will that make the budget a good document? So, partly, I blame we people in the opposition for failing to guide the debate. We let the media to set the agenda and the media is sensational. Sometimes, it might even be the hand of the work of Mr. Museveni. They put a story in the Monitor, but, because, you see, let me go to the issue of 39% as I wind up. I'm not trying to defend the parliament, but I want to be honest with you. It would have done me a lot of good if I was here to bash the parliament. After all, I will still get my money. But I don't want to tell you lies. When we joined the parliament, we found a standard that each MP is given money to buy fuel to be able to go around the constituency twice every month. They call it one, two round trips around the constituency every month. They pick the fastest point of your constituents and estimate the amount of fuel you needed to go there. And they give you that fuel in cash. Two round trips, and I know every MP does that. At least, you, you, you all agree that any MP goes to the coast twice a month. So, what has been happening this term? The money for that fuel was calculated at 2,700. Whereas the pump price for fuel is 4,500. So, what they are doing right now is the commission is saying, "Why are we giving MPs 2,700 for fuel when all of us know that fuel is 4,500 shillings?" So, the increase is coming because of the increase in fuel. And how is this money given out? The person who receives the smallest salary in parliament is Honore Bocagulani. Because parliament sits in Kampala Central. And you see, they calculated the distance from your constituency set to parliament. And you see, they calculated the distance from your constituency to parliament. So he get, he's the one who is paid the least amount of, of money in Uganda. And then Honore Bonsereko, Nabila, those MPs for Kampala, and then we MPs in Mukono, Watisani, Mijig. Those people who get more money, the person who receives the biggest salary in parliament is the MP, the female MP for youth. Because she takes the whole country. The female MP for youth takes the whole country. That one gets the biggest salary in parliament. And then these MPs coming from Kalamoja, those farthest districts, receive big, bigger salaries than us who live near the city. So for me, my argument was with the issue of giving us four thousand five hundred for fuel. I said, "That is it." But why are we doing it for ourselves only? Equally, if there is a doctor who receives transport allowance, that allowance must be increased for the same reasons, even for teachers, even for, for all government workers. If we say that the fact of the matter is that fuel is no longer costing two thousand seven hundred, true. Let MPs be given four thousand five hundred, fine. But what about the doctors? Because they also buy the fuel from the same place. So if we have anything to argue about, it should be uniformity. However, the next day you see, a person wakes up and say, "The MPs have raised their salary." Let me tell you for sure, this, the salary, we all get the same amount. Leave allowances alone. We are paid eleven million shillings monthly. Every MP earns eleven million shillings monthly. But on your account, you find six million. Why? Part of the money, three million, four hundred thousand is deducted in taxes monthly. And then there was a realization that people would get very, very poor and live in deplorable situations after being MPs. Because when you are an MP, when you leave that job, you are not employable. Nobody can employ a former MP. So they started up a fund, they deduct your money, pension fund, keep it for you. So when I'm paid eleven million, I lose three million, four hundred thousand in taxes. And then they deduct one million to put on my pension. And on my account, I find there six million shillings. That money has not been raised. What Ugandans should demand for, instead of attacking salaries for MPs? I want you to join me. In the last parliament, I and an MP called Eddie Quizira moved the motion to establish a Ugandan National Salaries Board. If we have a national salaries board that will determine the salaries of everybody, including MPs, we would demand for uniformity. But if you allow MPs to determine their salaries through their commission, definitely, if you give them four hundred and thirty-nine billion shillings on their vote, they will make sure that they pay themselves well. But let's have a national salaries board. Do you know what happened? When we moved that motion, I and Eddie Quizira, the whole parliament busted into laughter. They laughed at us. They even, they never, we never even got anybody to second our motion.
Inclusive of our opposition, right? The opposition?
Nobody seconded us. You know, people were bashing up and said, "You people, you live in pretense. You want us to come here and deny ourselves the right to determine our salaries." So if you want to cause a real change, don't wait for this OTT is money an increase. Let's go and demand for a national salaries board that will determine the salaries of all workers of government in Uganda and cause uniformity in payments.
All right, uh, thank you so much. Uh, sure, we are going to get back to the audience. I'm only asking for two questions from the audience and...
And we close.
And we close, yes. So one lady, uh, one gentleman. So gentlemen, please come up and we close.
Thank you, Honore Bonsereko.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Sengendo. I'm also a simple boy from Entebbe.
Humble one.
A humble one, yeah. My question is gonna be is, I see like, I belong to People Power first of all and I don't belong to any political party in Uganda. Yeah, I'm, I belong to like, um, any group as long as it's aiming for change. I'm looking for change, I'm angry, I need change in Uganda.
What were you in two thousand sixteen?
I was supporting, supporting VESIJI. Yeah, I was there actually when the other Ajah Gambie, all that stuff. You talked about your elections in Mukono. You talked about winning FDC and NRM and other candidates from different parties. But I just don't want you to take People Power like any other political party right now in Uganda. This is a very, very, very dangerous way. As I was watching a few weeks ago, Tamale Milundi on YouTube, that gentleman said that when Honore Bonsereko was planning to contest for Chadondo, he approached you and you asked Honore Bonsereko twenty million shillings to... Actually, yeah, I think many of you watched that, to support him. Then here comes my question. Honore Bonsereko right now might have a colleague in Mukolo in your constituency who supported him. Honore Bonsereko comes here twenty twenty-one. Honore Bonsereko may like to support the other colleague who didn't ask for any penny to support him. So what are you going to do? Because there are so many Ugandans right now, like me, who doesn't want to lose Nambuse in parliament. I don't wanna lose you. Actually, I'm feeling so sad that I'm gonna lose VESIJI because Tiagulani is coming and I'm going to support him. So I don't wanna lose Honore Bonsereko in parliament. But as I said, Honore Bonsereko might have a colleague in your constituency who supported him and he will be willing to support that person. And trust me as we are, I support VESIJI because of Ajah Gambie and there are so many Ugandans who voted also VESIJI, VESIJI Ajah Gambie because it kept on happening in Uganda. And this is what is gonna happen right now in Uganda again. Honore Bonsereko, we, we are seeing like guilty president. He took over all the universities. We can't take that for granted. He took over like ninety-nine percent of the universities in Uganda. All the guilty president belongs to People Power. So we are going to see this coming again. He's going to second people in constituencies. So what do you say about that, Honore Bonsereko?
What are you trying to, to say?
Yes, what are you to gonna like save us? Because I don't wanna lose you in parliament. And here Honore Bonsereko is gonna come with a candidate in your constituency. So what are you two gonna do about that?
All right, thank you.
So to bring one candidate like in your constituency so that we don't lose people like you in the parliament.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Honore Bonsereko, you wanna respond to that?
I don't know if my brother is trying to intimidate Nambuse to blackmail me and to hold me at ransom. That will be very unfortunate because I don't deserve such treatment. First of all, if your source of information is Tamale Milundi, I highly sympathize with you. You are just allowing him to turn your head into a dusty bin where he throws whatever cassacero he has. I don't know if you have met Tamale Milundi and the person of recent. If you have, if you knew Tamale Milundi, the Tamale Milundi for me, I knew. Tamale Milundi was my editor in Mono. That's where I started to work. When this man caused the closure of our citizen newspaper and he escaped it, yes. I remained in Uganda and started working with Mono newspaper and Tamale Milundi was my news editor. When FM radios came up and talk shows started, I and Tamale Milundi formed a pair. Mr. Museven, among the many bad things he has done to Uganda, is picking on some of our best people and turning them into rags, machineries. First of all, I even find it very difficult to react to things said by Tamale because I know his state. If I had authority, I would check in Tamale in Toubutabika Hospital. I would check him in Toubutabika Hospital. I also at times get sad when I see reasonable and right-thinking members of society quoting him. On a single show, Tamale will contradict himself ten times. He will get up and say, "Vesji is Museven's project." As he ends the, the program, he will be saying, "Vesji is an itching opponent." In the same program. I don't know if you take time to listen him, to him with caution. He has always been calling Honore Bonsereko an infated candidate. And I don't know if you know that that means balloon. So he's not a man of record. When Honore Bonsereko comes here one day, ask him that when you went to see Nambuse over your candidacy for Chadondo East, did she demand for money from you? I think that is the most fair thing. Come on, you are talking about better numbers and setting the price at twenty million? Isn't that too little? Sure, don't I, if, if, if it is about money, wouldn't I pick much more money than that? What happened? I think I should tell you this, you people. When my brother Tiagulani decided to stand as a candidate for Chadondo East, he came to my place not once, not twice. He came there very, very many times. Those people who know my place in Mukono know that I have at least some two residences in that town. Why? Because Mr. Bachireke plus me equals two. One of our homes was under renovation, but we decided that we shall hold Honore Bonsereko meetings there. Around that period, I had started a campaign within a DP dubbed Bad DP. I called it off to allow that campaign to take its right space in the media and in the hearts of the people. I sent all my people I was using to Chadondo East. Every person under me, including my personal assistant. And I did this with the full knowledge of Honore Bonsereko. And I knew he was winning and I told him so. Fairness demanded that we stand with Kantinti because he had been our colleague. He had been wrongly removed from parliament by Museven. So it was quite very unfair for us to turn against him. But the conditions of the time called a new and fresh candidate in order to be able to, so that we could be able to defeat NRM. If this is a political party, if today they denounce Kantinti just because Tiagulani has joined, they will never be able to instill discipline in the party. That's the problem which comes with owning a political party. If you set the rules, you can't break them in a single night because somebody you love has joined. So FDC as a political party was between a lock and a hard place. Let me explain this. So for me, I wasn't surprised that FDC as a party remained with their candidate Kantinti, even when they knew that he was not winning. But for the sake of running the party and having the rules observed. So I told Tiagulani, "You are going to win. I've given you my team. They are going to secure your victory. But because of collective responsibility in parliament, I will not come to attack Kantinti." However, any time I detected that you are losing because of my absence, I will rejoin you. And I monitored that election from Mukono. What I did is what Rukwago did. He got his team of the Truth and Justice TJ, led by his deputy, Mukakulu Vega. He was the deputy team leader in TJ and sent them to Chadondo East. So I don't know where you people get this information that we are not supporting Tiagulani. So you, you, you quote Tamale, Museven is a spokesperson? Do you expect him to say good things about me? So, and I don't know why my brother Tiagulani, having heard all these accusations against us and him personally knowing what we have been doing for him, me and Rukwago, why he doesn't come out and clarify this? I don't know why. I don't know why. So that's why I'm requesting you that next time he comes here, ask him, "Do you know how many times Tiagulani comes to my place? Do you know how many times Tiagulani goes to Rukwago's place?" I heard the other day, we are talking about this agreement between Tiagulani and, and Kanokiza VESIJI. As I wind up, let me tell you something about that. When Honore Bonsereko was arrested, prior to that, he had announced for demonstration. He said, "Any person who has, who has ever had his rights violated, get up tomorrow and take a letter of not finding a police that you will demonstrate." So we waited for these Buannikas, whatever, those who make wall all around Tiagulani to join in the, in that demonstration. Buannika went and held a meeting in Masaka. None of them went there until Tiagulani was arrested. He was taken to prison. At court, Buannika was inside the court, all those people were in the court, but they said that Tiagulani had failed to get shulites. Do you know that? That they took him to Luzira because the shulites had been locked out of court? When all of those people were inside court? None of them could get up, not even Barbie, to stand the shulite for him? So we, we, we were left so surprised. It was upon that background that Honore Bonsereko, Dr. VESIJI called for an urgent meeting of the People's Government. He said, "We can no longer afford to allow Museven to torture Tiagulani alone. The team which is around him making a lot of noise, sending away people, does not know what to do. So we decided that uninvited, we are going to get up and fight for him." We did not love the way they conducted the demonstration when they were chased away from Nambuse. For us, we thought that the battle would have started from there. We did not like it when Tiagulani, Tiagulani's concert was stopped and he stood alone before police. You see that picture when he was standing alone before those trucks. So when we sat as People's Government, we said, "Tiagulani is fresh blood added onto the struggle. We must stand with him." The time to allow people to surround Tiagulani... The time to allow people to surround Chagulani, make noise, sending away as activists is over. So we started with going to Luzira demanding to see him. Government failed us. I personally got out of my house on the first of May, which was supposed to be a public holiday and came to parliament with the lead of opposition and held a press conference saying that tomorrow we are coming to court, every MP is going to be a surety. And we made sure that MPs were in court. We created the two groups, one led by me and another led by the lead of opposition. The one led by the lead of opposition to go in court, the one led by me to go to Luzira because he was being tried on camera. So that is how it all started. When Honore Botsagulani got out of prison, before he was arrested, there had been in a meeting, several meetings between him and Besseje. We decided that this was a time to give the country a photograph of us meeting him to show you that in fact we are meeting. It was deliberate. It was not at Maghre that we wrote that communique. For your information, meetings between Bobby Wine and Honore Bots and Dr. Kizabessje are held at a venue determined by Elias Rukwago and he chairs those meetings. And the issue of a joint communique that we should address you people jointly. I was in that meeting, was raised by Honore Botsagulani. And he and his team are the people who drafted that communique. And I remember them sending me a copy, it is still here. I, 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 I told this person, I'm going to show him those communications so that you, you get to know that most of the things you are, you are hearing are not true. But we can't, we are, we are, we are old enough. We cannot go shouting, some of these are secrets. So let me tell you, that joint communique is deliberate. And we are addressing you on free issues. Lastly, and lastly, those people who are denouncing that communique, is it your assertion, Delafour, that Honore Botsagulani has no capacity to make a contract? That he has no capacity? That he can go somewhere with people, sit, write up something, send, appoints a spokesperson today? The next day sends him at a press conference to, to make that press communique? And then you say, no, 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 hello, your Besseje. So what, what category then? How, 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 how then do you want Honore, Mr. Chagulani? Do you, do you want to say that he has no capacity to tell good from bad? And if he does not have that capacity to tell good from bad, how can he be a president then? So kindly, give us benefit of doubt. Kindly give us time to lead you. There has never been in the world anything called a leaderless struggle. Any struggle without leaders will definitely collapse. Or in September two thousand nine, the Uganda almost overthrew Museveni. He even ran out of State House. But because that riot, that attack on Museveni's government had no leaders, at the end of that day, you know, there was nobody to take it on. What is happening in Sudan should teach you? That even if it, their masses, they must be hearing from their leaders. And these people tell them, don't leave the streets, we have not got what we want yet. So allow this struggle to have a leadership. Allow us space to cause a unity and a honest one between Honore Botsagulani and Dr. Besseje. One of them, one of them is a highly favored young man of charisma who has the support of people of his age bracket across the country. Another one is inexperienced politicians with structures that consist in this mass support Chagulani has. And Museveni knows that the combination of those two cannot leave his government up. And you know, because of that, they are targeting major prayers in that, in that union. And one of them and their spokesperson happens to be Betty Nambose. So they would say so many things about me. Like I told you, I learnt when I arrived here. That's when I learnt that I had got money from Museveni to come here. So a person like Huanuka, who knows how I, I reached here? When he hear such things, he even gets annoyed. No rechovanangi, mwebe dere moko.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Honore Bonsereko. Well, we are running out of time, so I'm not gonna be in position to take any more questions. But of course, there are people in the diaspora who would have some more, uh, questions regarding whether within one second, it's gonna be a yes or no. Are you going to table a bill when you go back to Uganda to allow Ugandans in diaspora to start voting? Is it yes or no? One second.
Let me tell you, we have always discussed this thing. We want you people in the diaspora to vote. We want people in, in prison to vote. But let me tell you, before we are able to secure votes at Nakaserobi polling station in Kampala, if we give Museveni an opportunity in a country like Uganda that does not have a register of people outside the country, suppose he comes back and tells us that I've got a ten thousand votes from United States, how will we be able to say, no, you did not get?
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, I want to thank you, the members who are in the audience, uh, for your time and listening to Honore member and Mr. Sereko. From us in the diaspora and those who are watching us from river, we want to thank you so much. Uh, the town hall has been successful. I believe that Honore Bonsereko has answered all the questions like... Like I said, some, some of the people...
That is why I will even, because let me tell you, when we went to Congress the other day, we met MPs. We are trying to request them, we are lobbying that they, they, they bring a motion to discuss Uganda in the Congress. Uh, your congressmen, I call them MPs and you know, senators. We met them and they did accept. One of them is even the MP for this area, Mark Governor. Yes, he's one of those people who have, um, accepted it to, to, to sponsor our motion in, in, in the Congress. And so he did ask me to return some, sometime in July, when he expects to present that motion. Me and other people who are victims of torture by the state. So I will be returning pretty soon. And I think that time we shall have much more time to talk. And then I expect that by July, I will even have more good things to tell you.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. From us to you guys, thank you so much for your time. And see you next Saturday on Ugandan Crossroads and other shows. Today, time is now for change. Have a great night, nice week, see you soon.